All right, I'd like to call to order the November 20 Atherton City Council Regular Meeting.
Okay, do it.
And remote participation, do you want to announce that, Anthony?
So we have Councilmember Stacy Holland participating remotely. That was properly noticed and she'll be participating regularly as though she were here in person.
Hi.
And all votes tonight must be taken by roll call.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anthony, can we have the roll call?
Certainly, Councilmember Holland.
Here.
It's Member DeGolio.
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Hawkins.
Here.
Thank you.
So now is the time for public comments. It's reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, limited to three minutes.
There they come.
Want to say who you are?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Fiona Levpress. I'm a sophomore at Sacred Heart, as well as the founder and president of the Atherton Youth Advisory Group. The Atherton Youth Advisory Group is a group of high schoolers either living in or attending school in Atherton. Our mission is to represent the voices of teens in Atherton governance, such as, as such a large percentage of the population here is teens, but we don't have voting rights quite yet. So many of our issues and opinions are often left unrepresented. To solve this, we work to represent the voices of teens in our local government. Our members are deeply passionate about government as well as building community in Atherton. We have some of our members here tonight. This is...
I'm Audie. I, oh, sorry. I, I live on Stockbridge and I go to school in Belmont.
I'm Sarah. I'm a sophomore at Sacred Heart Prep.
And I'm Sophie. I'm a sophomore at Menlo. This will be our second year as a group. And previously, we have been instrumental in the organization and volunteer work at Earth Day, as well as working at our civic engagement fair with Mayor Hawkins-Manwellyan at Menlo School. And this year, we intend to further our issues that matter to our community. And we had planned to support a debate between council candidates this year, but unfortunately, since the town election was canceled, this has been postponed. But we plan to hold pickleball and tennis contests in the Holbrook Palmer Park to help build community. And one of our main initiatives that we are hoping to revive this year is the Easter egg hunt. And we would also love to provide the council with input on any issue that you may find helpful. And we are looking forward to bettering Atherton together and answering any questions that any of you may have.
Go ahead.
Do, do you have anybody from MA?
We do, yes. If you're able to come today.
How many people you have from MA?
We have a total of eight members and I believe two are attending MA.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Great, I just, I didn't see them here.
Totally good.
And that was one of the things when you first came, there wasn't any MA people. So I'm glad you included them, thank you.
Are you guys going to work on Earth Day this year?
We are, yes.
Oh, you are, so when you said that, I was worried.
They're doing the Easter egg hunt first.
We were definitely planning.
Easter egg hunt first, okay.
Great. We'd be looking forward to that, that Easter egg thing. And you're going to need a lot of volunteers to help do that.
Yeah. The kids at all the schools are going to volunteer to help us.
You got to stuff a lot of eggs.
Yes.
I've done that. It's a lot of fun.
So have I. There's a, I think there is a list of the vendors that they brought in and things like that that have been negotiated.
I mean, I...
Um, I'll see if I can't get that for you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay, that'd be a good starting point. Then you can choose whether or not you want to use those or do, do what has happened before or do something different.
Yes, for sure. Thank you so much.
Awesome.
Any more questions?
I think it's great that you've continued to meet and you've grown.
Yes, we have.
So that's really good.
Yeah.
And, and you're, you're very diverse, which is, you, you, because you're representing all the schools. I, I think that's wonderful.
Thank you.
In terms of doing the Easter egg hunt, do you, have you guys, are you going to submit a proposal to the council for funding?
Yes, we will. We haven't quite gotten everything organized yet, but...
But you will be asking for funding for the council?
No, we didn't pay for that. It was done by the dames and the foundation.
The dames don't exist anymore.
The foundation's still there.
Foundations.
Yeah.
The Dames Foundation.
Yeah, the, no, the, the, the Park Foundation.
Oh, the Park Foundation.
Park Foundation.
Dames, yeah.
They were part of the, you know, the dames.
But the dames funded it all themselves, actually.
Contact the...
Foundation, Frank Merrill. Tell him I said...
Park Foundation, right?
Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation, Frank Merrill.
Okay.
Okay, I can...
Perfect, thank you so much.
I can send the contact to your, to you or your dad. Send me an email.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, guys. That's awesome.
Okay, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You don't have to stay for the whole boring thing.
Well, yeah, you do.
I know, we lock the doors. Do we have any other public comments?
We do, Chris.
Good evening, council. Councilmember Chris Durkin here from neighboring Redwood City. But I'm here tonight as a member of the LPTQI Plus Commission with the County of San Mateo. And I just wanted to remind you ourselves and the community about the commission and what we do. And, and also to thank you for raising the pride flag back in June. And then thirdly, to ask you to agendize a presentation from the commission. So we can tell you more about our work plan, about what we've accomplished and share that with the community as well. So just for the benefit of the folks in the community, the mission of the LPTQI Plus Commission is to cultivate San Mateo County as a welcoming, affirming, safe environment where it's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, gender expansive community members can thrive. And we're so lucky to have so many resources here in this county. In addition to the commission, there's the San Mateo County Pride Center in San Mateo, Coast Pride in Hafnum Bay, the county's Pride Initiative, as well as this commission. And so I want to just thank you again for being such a great partner with us at the committee, at the commission and the county. And encourage you to, you know, have us over and give us, you know, we'll give you a little presentation about what we do. So thanks again for your time and I think I'll see some of you very soon. Commute.org tomorrow and probably the council city is maybe in a couple of weeks. So looking forward to it and have a great meeting and nicely...
Going Foster City or to the one up in Belmont?
I will try to make them both, that's my goal.
Well, it's all at the same time, so they gave us two opportunities. I'm going to Foster City.
Okay. I'll see you there.
Yeah, okay.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, is there anyone online?
No, there's, there's, there's members of the public, but I know they're going to talk about something else.
Okay. Uh, there's no, uh, bye, guys. There's no report out, there was no closed session. So we're going to move to the consent agenda, items one through four. Does anyone have any comments or...
Ex parte communications.
Oh, sorry, I missed the SP. You are really good, you always catch me, don't you? Are there any disclosure of ex parte communications on the council?
No.
I take that as a no? Okay, so we're to the consent agenda, item one to four.
City manager has a comment?
Madam Mayor, item number one, or sorry, two, which I believe are the minutes, where on October 16th, you should have a printed copy from the city clerk, Medias. They were corrected to reflect more accurately the motions that were made at that meeting.
Yeah, he sent them out also.
And, and also in the consent agenda, item number one, it says approval of bills for September. That was a typo. And so it's actually approval of bills and claims for October, because that's what is in the agenda packet.
For you.
There you go.
Good catches. Any, anything else, anybody? Okay, so...
Um, moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I think, was there any public comment?
Roll call even on this?
Was there any public comment on the consent?
Is there any public comment on items one to four?
The consent agenda.
Nope, no comments.
Who made the motion?
Elizabeth, I seconded it.
Okay. Do we have to do a roll call on even that?
Everything.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
That's okay.
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGolio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Widmer?
Yeah.
And Mayor Hawkins.
She should say, she should say aloha.
Okay. Public hearing.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing for items five through seven. Consideration and directions regarding adoption of town charter to include appointment of a standing subcommittee of the council. And we'll have a presentation by George Roderick, the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a clarification, this is the regular agenda, not an actual public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so at your June 5th, 2024 study session, the council discussed the possibility of pursuing a town charter. Following discussion, the council directed that staff return in September with a recommendation on next steps for discussion by the council. That item was continued from September to tonight's meeting in lieu of other more pressing items that were on your docket. Uh, the items were moved forward to the council at the request of council for consideration, consideration of appointment of a subcommittee. The council can discuss the merits of continuing this discussion via subcommittee. Uh, the subcommittee may be appointed as an ad hoc subcommittee via mayoral appointment or a standing committee by council appointment. Uh, if the council wants to engage the public in the initial discussion, the subcommittee will need to be a standing committee. The subcommittee can also start out as an ad hoc committee and then transition at a later date to a standing committee. In addition, the council may also wish to consider setting out some parameters for the subcommittee, i.e. similar to the charters you have for committees and commissions. The council may provide feedback to staff tonight and then direct staff to return in maybe January or February with that sort of a draft charter and working scope for the subcommittee that can be reviewed by the council. And then the council or mayor can then select members at that time. A question was raised with respect to the number of charter cities in San Mateo County. As of 2020, there were 121 charter cities in California. It's grown by a little bit, maybe three or four. In San Mateo, the 20 cities, there are two charter cities, Redwood City and San Mateo. In Santa Clara County, 15 cities, there are a few more. There are six charter cities, Gilroy, Mountain View, Palo Alto, San Jose, Santa Clara, and Sunnyvale. And then Marin, which consists of 11 cities, there's only one charter city in that center fell. That concludes the staff report for tonight. I'm happy to take any suggestions or direction.
Any questions?
Well, I got a suggestion. There were, there really...
It's questions, it's questions only right now.
He said suggestions or questions.
Well, there's no questions, you should, you should check the public.
Are there, we have no questions up here? I actually do have a question.
And so do I.
For the sake, for the sake of the public, I'd like to hear kind of a summary of what you think are the benefits and what the drawbacks are.
Well, the benefits are getting slimmer and slimmer with respect to becoming a charter city. Uh, in fact, their only real significant benefit at this point is probably financial. You have more options open with respect to contracting. You have more options open with respect to taxes. Uh, the options that are there with respect to land use decisions and home rule are slowly being eroded by the state, in particular with respect to housing. Uh, and in terms of disadvantages, there's not a lot there, other than that it's a, it's another process you have to go through to change the charter, to adopt any particular rules that you want to include in the charter that's required a public vote. Uh, and it's another document, much like the general plan, that whenever staff presents something to the council, we have to review to make sure whatever's being presented is consistent with the town's charter.
My question is, it seems to me, um, how many, do you have any idea? And I know you gave us a link to the League of Cities list for the whole state of California. And so maybe there's more, but it seems that, are there any smaller sized cities that are charter cities? The list that you gave for our immediate surrounds of the Bay Area seem like all of the cities are much larger than ours. Um, but do you know of any cities that would be comparable to our size and look and feel?
Just going through the list, you know, Fortuna is on the list. That's a pretty small community up there by...
In Southern California?
That's in Northern California, uh, by Eureka area. Um, Piedmont, small community.
Okay.
Let's see. Not a lot of other small ones. Most of them are much larger than us. Solvang is on the list, that's a relatively small city.
Thank you.
In the article that you shared just today, it talked about a trend of, of people not voting in favor. That was it correct that only 5% or was it only five or was it 5%?
Yes.
So most people, most residents are voting against it because they perceive it's a means to raise taxes.
That's, that's what the article...
Is that what, do you agree with that perception? Is that...
Do I, do I personally agree with that perception? No, there's a lot of reasons many jurisdictions become charter cities. Some of it's grassroots that they want to protect home rule. And there's a perception that we have more ability for local control if we're a charter city. So there's, there's other, other reasons could be political. They want to make sure that the council is, either has more power or an exact amount of power that they want them to have. Many reasons.
Any other questions up here? Any?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um, I was reading through the League of Cities Toolkit, which is attachment one. And one thing that stood out to me, and maybe Mona or George know, but on page 12 of that document, it gives examples of different restrictions that charter cities have. And one of them said, the Santa Barbara City Charter prohibits the city council from approving development that exceeds established building height limits in various parts of the city. And I was just wondering, in light of all of our housing requirements that the state is putting on every city, have, has that been challenged? Is that something that height restrictions is something that could be established and maintained in a charter?
Mona, you're certainly welcome to, to add to it, but I, I think my perspective is if it's a constraint, state law is going to prevail with respect to all the new housing laws. Mona?
Um, I agree with that. I think that the question that HCD looks to when approving housing elements is whether there's any obstructions to development, especially when it comes to any type of affordable housing units and multifamily units. So that would be the more specific component. I think that we could establish building height limits with respect to market rate units, because we, there's no, at this point, incumbences on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Sorry, do we have any comments or questions from the online in the room? Do you guys want to switch to comments? Does anybody want to take your turns making your comments?
Yeah, so the suggestion I was going to make is a twofold suggestion. Um, I think first off, before we decide how we would proceed, would be the decision, do we want to move forward with being a charter city at this time? You know, as somebody pointed out earlier, you know, George's comment from, from the newspapers or, or the article from the newspaper Chronicle, I believe, indicated that the trend right now of the public is that they see that there's different ways to raise taxes, you know, property taxes or have a real estate transfer tax. And those were some issues that were, uh, driving our decision not to do that several years ago. And you could say, well, we'll put in an item that says that we're not going to be able to do that, but a future council can put something on the, on the ballot out for the residents to vote for and, and then get it approved and change the charter. So once you are a charter city, you can change that charter. We need to recognize that. So I think it should be a twofold decision. You know, first off, do we want to do this? And secondly, if so, then how are we going to build a, a subgroup to go look at that?
Okay.
That was my, that was my suggestion.
I'll, I'll go next. I really believe that it is something that we should look at and investigate. I think that our decision to whether or not it's a standing committee, which means it's a Brown Act committee where it's publicly noticed, the public can come and participate, just like you're participating here now in our council meetings, would, for me, would be the way to go. It's a little bit more burdensome on the staff to put out the agenda. Or an ad hoc committee, just to do the initial groundwork to kind of figure out, which meets informally, and it's not a Brown Act committee, that would be tasked to kind of work with staff to kind of create a, a framework before then maybe morphing into a standing committee. But I, and through that process, you know, identify the what, where, why, and how, you know? What is it, are we expecting to get out of transitioning to a charter city? And why? And how would that go about? Because there is a process. It has to be voted on by the residents and the next general election is in 2026. So we're not in a really big hurry here. So, but I do, it has come up. It has been brought to our attention by a number of residents that it might be a way to circumvent some of the housing element requirements. And, you know, like George is saying, that at the end of the day, that's probably not going to happen. You know, because instead of being more lenient, the state government has, is becoming more insistent on housing development all across the state. So that, but I clearly think that it's, we've done this before. We did it in like, I think, 2015. And, um, you know, we looked at it because there was, we were in kind of a financial strait. And we looked at it in the, through the eye lens of the property transfer tax, which would help our bottom line. We don't seem to need that right now. So that, the only thing, purpose, so that's the why, where, and how. And that's my opinion. So I, I think that we should really pursue a standing committee or an ad hoc committee that would then maybe morph into a standing committee. That's my comments.
Rick or Stacy, who wants to go next?
Yeah, I'll give my comments. We looked at this, uh, nine or 10 years ago. And I think the reason that we looked at it then was principally thinking about a property transfer tax. We had come off a period where, uh, we didn't have surpluses that, where we were constantly challenged uh, on, on the expense versus revenue side. Uh, I don't think we have that problem today. And I'm personally not interested in looking at it for tax reasons. Uh, but I do think that home rule is a real issue. I don't think that home rule is something the state can completely do away with. Uh, I think whether that has any impact on housing, I, I know there, there was recently a piece of litigation brought by charter cities where they succeeded because they had the home rule independence that's associated with charter cities. And while the state can certainly take that away with, uh, by, by making some decisions around that, they haven't done it yet, but, uh, but I recognize that they could. Uh, I, I agree with Elizabeth that it makes sense for us to look into this. I, I think, why, why wouldn't we want more home rule? I, I'm not sure why we wouldn't want it, but I think we could look into it in the, in the course of investigating it. And, um, I think that, uh, the, ultimately, I want it to be a standing committee because I want the public to be able to participate. Uh, but I think it could be a good solution to start as an ad hoc committee. The way I'd recommend that we approach it is that we give direction to staff to come back with a recommendation on what the charter for the charter committee would be.
It's a charter.
Yeah, the charter charter. So, uh, rather than just sort of blindly approve it, I'd rather have some more concrete direction. And if staff could come back with that in, in the beginning of next year, I think that would be the best way to go. And I, I'd be very comfortable with starting with an ad hoc committee. Uh, but I definitely think we should be able to include residents in the course of this investigation and not just speaking in public comment at our council meetings, but actually participating in the review. Uh, so ultimately, I think that means we should have a standing committee.
Good.
And Stacy?
Yeah, I agree with Elizabeth and Rick. I think it's worth evaluating. Um, I think where I differ from the two of them is I would say it should be a standing committee right out of the gate, personally. There's a lot of public interest in this. So I think having public access to any decisions and the education around it matters. And especially because it might, I just think this could be, there's going to be a lot of questions around it. So having every step of this be in the public would make sense to me. Um, but yeah, I think it's definitely worth looking into.
I guess my turn.
Oh, okay.
But I'll give you a second chance.
All right, I appreciate it, because I was talking about the process, not what I thought.
All right. Um, well, I guess I'm the odd man out here because I'm the only one here, though I think it's a waste of time and money. Um, I usually am in favor of learning about things. So if everybody wants to learn about it, then I'm not opposed to that. But once you get to the point where you're actually implementing it, you're going to have to cause a lot of money because it has to be on the ballot. Uh, it's a lot, it's a big effort and I haven't heard one real reason of why we're doing it. This came up this time because there, because as Rick was saying, that there were some charter cities that were able to skirt some of the housing element stuff, but they closed that window or, or in the process thereof. So that's not going to be a benefit that we can use. And you heard everyone up here say, we're not really wanting to raise taxes from it. So, and I don't really totally understand what home rule is going to gain us versus the amount it's going to cost us to put it on a ballot. That being said, I'm all fine if everybody wants to learn more about it because learning more about anything is fine, as long as we're not spending too much money to do that. Bill, I'm sorry.
So he gets a rebuttal? I think, you know, we're going to go round and round now, okay? So you're going to give him and then us?
Yes, everyone who wants to speak is speak. We only have two items on the agenda tonight. So everybody, I'm not cutting anybody off. Go ahead, Bill.
First off, if we're going to move forward, um, I agreed with, with Rick that it'd be great if the staff could put together, um, you know, some educational material and some process material, um, and, uh, do a better, you know, brief us a little bit more and before we decide which way to go. They, you know, I looked at this and I, I wrote part of, with the former city attorney, wrote the, one of the charters that we had. And I thought that all it says was that, you know, we're going to act the same way, but we're going to reserve, essentially keep our powder dry in case something comes up that we want to exclude. And, and that's the benefit of this. You know, yes, indeed. And I think the reason that it gets canceled, people don't want to do it these days, is they're afraid about taxes. And I, and I agree with that. I've thought through that, could we put it, put in the charter that we wouldn't raise any property tax or real estate transfer tax? But then you think about, well, future councils can erase all that stuff. So at this point in time, my, my view is, um, if we're going to have it, then I support that we start with just, you know, just an appointed group and then later grow it. But, um, if it's a yes or no, should we even do it? I think at this point in time, I think, I agree, it's a waste of time and a waste of staff time. And I'd like to kill it right now.
So, um, my, my second opinion about this, after hearing everyone's thoughts on it, that an ad hoc committee would be an easy probe into the what, where, and why. And I agree with Stacy, and I said that in the very beginning of my opening remarks before, is that it should be a public process. And the public has brought it to us recently for the, um, issues of the housing element. So certainly, the public would be involved. I think that the ad hoc committee would be a very short-lived type of committee. And it would be less impactful on staff's time and on staff's, on our budget. And so I think that is an easy way to gather information, get some clarity about, you know, a direction to go before we open it up as a standing committee to go further. Because we'll bring it back to council as the ad hoc committee. And if the council says at that point that eh, we don't want to do it right now, you know, it's too, you know, it's, it's not beneficial. It's, you know, going to be too costly. And, you know, why are we doing it? Okay, that kind of a thing. So that's kind of how I feel. I do believe that at... I do believe that at the end of the day, if we want to go forward with it, that should be a standing committee with the public involved, but as a low-cost probe. And having staff create a charter for the charter committee to look into. And I think George has already done that in the past. I mean, we've got documents in our binders where, you know, he kind of has written some guidelines about a charter city. So that's, that's my opinion. And I think this, you know, can be done all next year if you want.
Rick, do you have anything else to say? No? Stacy, anything else to say?
No.
Do you guys mind if we divide it into two votes? Maybe a vote on do we even want to go forward? And then if we want to go forward, do we, which way do we want to go? So we can get a consensus on, on that. Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting earlier.
Well, yes. And, you know, just with, we keep in mind that this was brought to us by a very powerful kind of influential group of residents wanting us to investigate it.
But we found out that what they wanted us to do it for didn't, doesn't count. So it's.
That's not true.
That's, it, there's, you know, there was that one instance in Huntington Beach. Was that Huntington Beach?
But the state hasn't made that assertion yet. The state could, and, and we anticipate the state will. But the state hasn't made that yet. So that's projecture, which I think is reasonable and, and the right thing to assess. For me, I want to find out more about what the benefits of home rule might be. That's what I'd like to understand.
So I, I don't want to become a charter city. And I'm not advocating to become a charter city. I think that we need to go through the process and, you know, open-ended. So, I mean, we can hold that vote if you want, you know? Do we even want to?
All right. Is everyone done with comments? Should I, I'm going to, because I'm going to ask.
As a public, yeah.
Oh, does the public have?
Which is already taken.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Done with public.
All right, you're confusing me, guys.
Confusing me.
All right, all right. So why don't we start with the first question of who's in favor of action, of killing it now, as Bill said, or exploring it further?
You're going to have a yes or no.
I'm, I'm interested in exploring it further.
I'm interested in exploring it further.
Same.
Further.
Well, there's already three votes.
Okay, there you go, all right.
Well, you got to, you know.
So do I have? Do we have to vote on this or are we just giving?
This could be just direction to have staff come back with a charter proposal. We can make that decision, right, about whether it's ad hoc or standing.
At some future date.
Now, or you're asking them to do that?
No.
I'd, I'd give staff direction to come back with a proposed charter.
And she's nodding her head, so that was it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we can do that.
And we don't need to vote on that, so okay.
Here we go.
All right.
Moving on.
Thank you, Stacy.
Transportation.
Okay. Item.
Item number six, adoption of the countywide Town of Atherton Local Roadway Safety Plan and designation of safety corridors. And we have a report from Robert Ovadia, Public Works Director.
If you see a slideshow?
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before I get into the slide presentation, I'm gonna, it'll be brief. I'm going to give a, a brief outline of what we're asking for today, the process that we've gone through. And as the mayor indicated, we're looking for adoption of a resolution adopting the countywide and Town of Atherton Local Roadway Safety Plan as well as designation of safety corridors here in the Town of Atherton. A local roadway safety plan is identify, identify systematic analysis, identifies and systematically analyzes roadway safety needs and helps develop a prioritized list of safety countermeasures. A local roadway safety plan offers a proactive approach to address safety needs and demonstrates an agency's responsiveness to safety challenges through local agency partnerships and collaborations. And with the adoption of a local roadway safety plan, it makes us eligible for various funding to help improve safety throughout the town. So just brief highlights on the presentation. We're going to talk about the local roadway safety plan, a commitment to Vision Zero, how the plan was developed, and some information with regards to the safety analysis that was done and some findings and some recommendations and next steps.
Through the, may I just interject one quick thing?
Sure.
If you let me, please. So if you notice the little logo bug at the bottom, it's the Town of Atherton's logo. And underneath it is three, four letters, C slash C A G. That's the council slash, it's cities, council.
It's the San Mateo County City and County Association.
Association of Governments. So it's C CAG, which is an organization of San Mateo County. And every city in San Mateo County belongs to it and sits on the board. It's kind of a unique board in the state of California. But they get funding from your gas taxes and, you know, and they delegate funding and they create these roadway. They're all about roads, transportation and roads. Okay, so they're the ones that are kind of driving this in a sense, right? They created a local roadway safety plan.
Let me say, yes and.
A yes and.
Yes and. So this plan was developed in partnership with C CAG and the various jurisdictions throughout the county. C CAG took a leadership role in developing the countywide local roadway safety plan, which is part of what we're asking for in terms of adoption, as well as assisted those cities that don't have their own local roadway safety plan to help prepare one for each jurisdiction. So I'm going to be talking about that partnership and the efforts as part of the presentation. But thank you, Vice Mayor, for the.
You know, because people don't understand that, okay? They think that we're just kind of sitting up here, kind of creating all this. And they, they provide the money to implement.
They, they do. They provide a lot of support and they do support the town in terms of seeking funding for, through various grant opportunities as well. And so as I started in, in the brief introduction, a local roadway safety plan follows both state and federal guidelines with regards to a safe system approach, taking a holistic look at roadway safety via historical and existing roadway safety data, looking at various factors as to what might be causing those, causing accidents and taking a holistic approach at finding solutions. So the local roadway safety plan from the countywide level sets a countywide vision to advance roadway safety. And then on the local agency level, by adoption, we do the same. By adopting the plan, we are in a position to apply for various funding sources through MTC, through the State Highway Safety Improvement Program and through the federal government's Safety for All program. In, in it, as I was indicating, in addition to the countywide effort, C CAG assisted 10 jurisdictions in developing individualized local roadway safety plan, including in the Town of Atherton, City of Belmont, Brisbane, Town of Colma, East Palo Alto, Foster City, Half Moon Bay, Hillsborough, St. Carlos and Woodside. So.
Those are the smaller towns.
These are all, as, as the Vice Mayor was saying, are smaller jurisdictions that hadn't had the resources to develop these on their own. And most of the jurisdictions in the county now have one.
Robert?
Yes, sir.
So, but we are allowed to add to it, is that not correct?
If you have some edits to the document before adoption, we can certainly incorporate that.
Okay, so, you know, so it's, it's a briefing on what they've come up with based on the data that they used. But if we think that there's more that needs to be included, we can do that.
And as I'll highlight later, this is supposed to be a living document. And so it's not intended to be stagnant. And we will have opportunities and are, in essence, we should be updating the plan on a regular basis.
Great, thank you.
So on a countywide level, the county takes a holistic look at accident data throughout the county, but they also aggregate the data and needs from individual communities, their visions and their goals. So from a town perspective, what we have set out as our vision is the idea is the desire to reduce fatal and severe injury crashes to zero by 2050 and to promote a culture of roadway safety in Ath, in Atherton through all of our departments in communication with our residents and with our educational institutions. It's not, improving roadway safety is not just engineering. It is so much more than that because there's a whole bunch of human factors, a lot of education to the public and a lot of other efforts that are required to improve roadway safety other than just hard fixes. And so during the development, there was an advisory group that included members of each of the local jurisdictions as well as regional agencies such as the MTC, California Highway Patrol, the Transportation Authority. And all of this effort was led by C CAG. And so this, the development of the plan took about a year and a half from start to finish. And it included a variety of public engagement events to identify what the public felt were safety concerns and priorities throughout, in individual locations as well as throughout the county. Those efforts included an online mapping tool that folks were encouraged to participate in and provide feedback. Through that, there were over 350 respondents with over 500 comments. There are 11 in-person engagement events. And that includes an event that was hosted here at the Atherton Library. And so as the county was looking at all of the data, they identified what it termed as a high injury network for motorists, for pedestrians and cyclists based on five years' worth of crash data. So here you have an image of what it looks like on a countywide level. And so they use that, I said, they use that crash data, systematic factors and social equity areas in terms of trying to help identify those high injury locations. So here I'm going to give a brief overview of accident history in the Town of Atherton. And it's not all bad news. So over the, the course of the five years, there are 121 fatal and injury crashes reported. The greater majority of those were vehicular crashes at approximately 70%. About 20% were bicycle crashes and 10% were pedestrian crashes. There were a total of four, I'm sorry, there were. Yeah, so there were a total of four fatal and severe crashes, two that involved pedestrians and two that involved vehicles. I think you're familiar with the two fatalities. I believe that they were on El Camino Real, which is a state highway, not a local roadway. But, and so if this is our five-year picture, four accidents is a low number, but it's not zero. And so what we're gearing towards is trying to get that number down to zero. In this graphic, what you have is a comparison to the countywide data. And so whereas we had 70% that involved vehicles, countywide, it was about 75. They had a slider, on a countywide level, there was a, there were severe and fatal accidents, severe injury and fatal accidents that involved both bicycles and pedestrians. And because we didn't have, so the good news, we didn't have any severe injury crashes that involved cyclists. The county did, and so that's why the percentages are skewed. And so though it shows that our bar on the pedestrian severe injury and fatal is, is high on a percentage-wise, it's low on a number, on the actual number.
I'm really confused.
Okay.
Are you saying that between 2018 and 2022, that's four years, that Atherton had 121 fatal and injury crashes? That's 30 deaths per year?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, what we're saying is that there were 121 injury crashes and fatalities. So these are accidents that somebody was hurt.
How many fatal?
I believe it was two.
Well, that makes me feel a lot better, I guess. I read fatal.
There, there's four total severe injury and fatal. And so the two fatalities were pedestrian, I believe pedestrians on El Camino Real. And the two others were injury, severe injury accidents in vehicles.
Think of it as just the way it was written that scene.
It's probably the way that I said it, so I apologize for that. And so the way that they measure accidents, there are accidents that there are no injuries. Most of those are, may go unreported. And so what we're talking about are reported accidents that somebody may have been hurt. And so that's the 121. Of that 121, four were considered severe injury or fatal.
Okay, okay.
That help clarify?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. And so in looking at that data, the consultant identified routes that would, routes and areas that would be considered for, as priority locations and as part of a high injury. So these are routes that have either a propensity for or have an accident history in the town. And I think that we're all familiar with most of these routes in terms of the volume of traffic is probably one of the key items, that the volume and speed of traffic on these routes. And so as we move forward, I want you to remember this map and we'll talk about the, the recommendation on designating of safety corridors because it corresponds with this data here. And so what we have in terms of the high injury network, you'll see Alameda de los Pulgas, Marsh Road, Middlefield Road, Oak Grove and Valparaiso as, you know, kind of key center, center points. Yes, sir.
Yeah, when you were mentioning how they put this together, that first off, they had pop-up things as opposed to announce things, which I'm not sure all, when you look at the responses, there weren't anybody listed from Atherton. It would have been nice if we had, had a meeting here. But one of the things that they looked at, as you pointed out, is, is the accidents and accidents that caused fatalities. But later on in the report, they talk about the fact that, you know, speed is a contributing factor to it. And I didn't understand why they didn't look at tickets or speed, speed studies and things like that, which I think are very important and probably would justify some, some improvements on certain roads that people have brought up and sent to George over the, for his pre-agenda meeting. You know, I think that those things are important and we should try to add those in if we, if we can to our, our plan as opposed to, you know, and then submit them back to C CAG, what we've done. Because I think that the speed is one of the issues and it does cause accidents. And so anyway, that's my comment. Thank you for listening.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll highlight some requirements in terms of the identification of safety corridors as, as we move forward. And so, I said, this here looked at accident history and propensity and identified priority locations. And the plan also identifies some potential targeted improvements that the town can consider that can be applied systematically in locations that are potentially considered high risk, even if crashes haven't occurred. And I'm going to say that we've already started moving in that direction with regards to types of improvements, and that includes rapid flashing beacons at mid-block crossings and unsignalized locations. And so, we have some projects that do that. And as I alluded to earlier, it's more than just hard fixes. It's education and outreach. It's enforcement. It is doing improvements. It's also working with our counterparts, not just focusing on the town, working with our neighbors, working with CCAG and, you know, school advocates and others to help propel safety as a culture. And so, with regards to the plan, we're looking at, we're requesting that you approve and adopt the plan. Following that, we will be continuing to pursue funding for safety improvements as we have been doing. We will continue participating through the countywide efforts with regards to transportation safety. And one of the items that is identified is tracking progress in terms of measure. And so, a sample of that would be what we do currently in terms of our conversations with our transportation, Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. Every month, they receive accident data from the police department in terms of where accidents are occurring, whether or not there's any injuries. What we can do to add to that is maybe a year-end summary of that accident data and being able to spend a little time in focusing in on where and what is happening. And so, along with the approval and adoption of the plan, we're looking at the designation of safety corridors. And you had those outlined on your map, and so I'm going to highlight, there are some state requirements in terms of what and how you designate safety corridors. There are some limitations. And what it does, I was going to say, let me highlight a couple of the benefits and a couple of the, the things that come along with it. And so, by designating safety corridors, recent, recent legislation has, allows for jurisdictions to adopt safety corridors under certain circumstances and allows for the reduction of speed limits by an extra five miles an hour versus what you can do without that. And so, speed limits are generally set by conducting an engineering and traffic survey that assesses traffic speeds and what the prevailing speeds are. And they call that the 85th percentile speed, where 85% of the traffic is going at that speed or less. And that is the base, the base point of where you set your speed limits. You're required to round that to the nearest five miles an hour, which is either up or down. So, if you are at, call it 33, then you're supposed to round up to 35. If you're at 32, then you're rounding down to 30. And based on the nature of the roadway, you can drop it by five miles an hour. And so, that is the state law and limitations. There are certain areas where the, where the state now allows, based on this legislation, an allowance for a five mile an hour extra drop. And that would be designation of safety corridors in business districts, which we don't have any, and areas of high senior activity, which again, we don't really have. Along with that is a recognition that these routes are potentially safety areas that need extra attention. And so, as we make those designations, we are acknowledging that we are aware that there are potential safety concerns. Most of these routes, we are actively doing things on. So, we've recently completed with the city of Menlo Park, improvements on Valparaiso. We've done a lot of work on Middlefield Road with regards to making improvements for safety. Alameda de los Pulgas, we have a current project on that we are also focusing our attention. So, those are kind of that balancing area in terms of you are acknowledging that there are safety concerns.
Robert, how does enforcement work with the traffic study?
And so, with regards to if you follow these guidelines in terms of setting your speed limits, then they are enforceable via radar. If you don't follow the engineering and traffic survey and you arbitrarily set a speed limit, it can be considered a speed trap. I have a question from the council.
Yeah. So, I noticed on school routes, you didn't include Laurel. Now, Laurel is a shared road with Menlo Park. And it, have you touched base with them? Because there's a lot of little kids on bikes and pedestrians walking down that road to get to Ensenyall from Glenwood. I venture to say more than there are on Edge Road or on some of these other roads that you've listed there. It is a school route. It is a high-volume traffic, you know, bike traffic route, as is Glenwood. And so, I do think that you should at least get, and there was an accident on Glenwood and Laurel. And I don't know, and it should be Laurel going all the way to Nativity. Because kids ride up and then they either turn right to Nativity or they turn left to get to Ensenyall. And if you go out there and you look, there's a ton of bikes out there on a daily basis. And so.
Is that part, I just, are we part of Laurel? It's really only Menlo Park.
We own the east part.
We own the one?
The eastern part, and Menlo Park owns the western part.
Oh, okay.
There's another shared.
Because it's only like about a block and a half, right?
It's about a block. Well, it's two blocks.
Okay.
Because there's Basset Lane in there.
Right, 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 right. Okay. I was unaware. Sorry.
Isn't Laurel on Edge?
No, Edge is on the other side of Oak Grove, a past, it's going out to Laurel School. It's, it's to the east of.
We need a map.
You're saying Laurel's free.
So, I was going to say, I haven't gotten to the part about school zones yet.
Oh, sorry. I read your chart. I was paying attention to you.
No, that, that's, that's fine.
But you don't have it.
So, I was just finishing up on, on safety corridors. So, there is a difference between designation of the safety corridor and actually taking an action on adjusting speeds. And so, tonight, we are not asking for any action on speeds other than a recommendation, or I'm sorry, if there are any referrals for consideration that you want to pass down to the Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. And so, as far as actions tonight, it's just asking for adoption of the plan and designation of the safety corridors. And so, there were a couple of questions that came through one-on-ones with the city manager, and so I wanted to hit a couple of those. There is a typo in the staff report in terms of the limits on Middlefield Road. In the staff reports, it's listed as Ensenyall to Ringwood. As noted on the map, the full lengths of Middlefield Road is Encina. So, it's just an extra letter there. So, I apologize for that confusion. So, what we're looking at, it would be the entire stretch of Middlefield Road as shown on that, that map. So, secondarily, there were questions about can we just add more streets? To do that, we'd have to do more analysis because what the state is requiring is a review of accident history, which was done as part of the local roadway safety plan. And so, if we don't have an accident history or a high likelihood, it's difficult to create additional streets on the local roadway safety plan. I'm sorry, add additional streets as safety corridors.
Would we have a chance in the future?
We have a, we always have a chance in the future. We regularly should be reviewing our traffic safety data and see where we have a propensity of issues.
This would just be the start.
This is just the beginning.
And then we can plan for future.
But I don't think you're saying, Robert, that we just don't have an accident history. It's just that accidents haven't occurred on those other streets. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Haven't been reported.
We don't have a date at this point in time.
Right.
For the last five years.
I ask a dumb question. Why is, El Camino is the only place we've had two fatalities? And it's not part of the safety corridor?
It's not our road.
It's not our road. Is it just, and that makes it not count?
No, it's not our road. We don't have, we don't have local authority over it.
Even if it's in our town, and that's the two places we have fatalities.
It goes up and down.
On the Caltrans. It's a state highway. So, they are the ones that do the various studies to set the speed limits on, on the route.
And they don't feed into the overall CCAG studies?
They weren't, they were tangentially involved in the study. They participated. They have their own process for doing their, conducting their engineering and traffic surveys and setting speed limits. We are, on our project on El Camino Real, we've included Caltrans as a partner in terms of the review of our alternatives because ultimately, they have to approve whatever happens on the roadway. And one thing to be mindful of is that as improvements happen on these different routes, there is the potential that traffic is calm, things slow down, and that 85th percentile drops. And so, one example is as we look at the improvements on Valparaiso, the visual narrowing of the roadway is hopefully slowing folks down, calming traffic a bit, and supporting lower speed limits.
Good luck.
I saw a hand raised.
Can you describe what the criteria was that was used to identify the safety corridors that are in the staff report?
Like I said, the consultant reviewed the traffic history, both in town and surrounding towns. So, there were, they, I would say, when we look at accident history on Valparaiso, for example, we're predominantly looking at the accident history in the town of Atherton. They were looking at both sides.
Ways.
Right?
So, it's based on accident history?
Accident history and other high, high consideration factors that may lead to a propensity for an accident.
What other high consideration factors?
I said, I I think it had to do with the, the speed and volume of traffic and how heavy the, and the activity centers around them. So, like on Valparaiso, you have the schools, you have, and you have the high level of traffic as well as the accident history.
But should we assume then that these five, other than El Camino Real, which isn't within our control, that these five streets have the greatest accident history of the streets in Atherton?
In terms of percentage of accidents, the answer would be yes. I was going to say, I think you can probably drop that down a bit because I don't think the accident history is, is as significant on Oak Grove per se as compared to Middlefield Road or Alameda de los Pulgas. And we know that we have a large number of accidents on Middlefield Road, for example.
Right. I, why was Oak Grove included, do you know?
I think they looked at the length coming in from Menlo Park, going past, going through Middlefield and passed it, past the high school. And so, they looked at that as kind of one.
The volume of traffic.
Volume and accident history for that stretch.
When they looked at the fatal, the two fatal ones, sorry to keep going back to this, those were at corners of cross streets in Atherton. So, when you count it, do you count it only if it's on a corner? It was, I think it was pedestrians walking from a cross street across. So, does that cross street now count as a danger zone or just El Camino and we throw it out?
They, they looked at it predominantly as it was happening crossing El Camino or in the middle.
And that, so it didn't get counted toward our street? Is, is due our?
I mean, it counted in our jurisdiction, but it's not on our roadway.
Okay. Then in a way, it is because it was crossing our street. So, do we give them feedback onto issues like that?
Give who?
El Camino?
Caltrans?
CCAG, CCAG. They made a set of decisions here. Our key ones aren't on there because we, they were thrown out because they're El Camino. I'm, what I'm trying to ask, let me see if I can ask in a way that makes sense. If you have an intersection, it's probably a problematic intersection because that's, and it's not on here. I don't think it's any of these streets where our fatalities were. And so, they didn't make the list because they said it was El Camino, so it didn't count. You know what I'm trying to say? That maybe we give them that feedback in this process? It allows us to customize it or no?
I think what you'll see on the map of the priority locations is that they did highlight a number of intersections. And those that are on El Camino are on the state highway. But again, we're, we're recognizing, we, we are aware and we are working through our project to make improvements on El Camino.
So, we're handling that ourselves, so we don't need them to.
We are outlining what we think will, will help.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, again, you know, I urge you to talk to Menlo Park and see what they're saying. But Laurel is, is a, is a route to school. There was an accident on Laurel and Glenwood, so it counts as having a high impact. And the fact that it was just, I believe it's been left off because it's a split street. But I do believe there is a ton of pedestrian and even more bicycle traffic that's on that road going to and from Ensenyall. And, and I, I feel very strongly it needs to be included as our part of a safer route to school and Menlo Park's part of safer route to school. And I urge you to touch base with them on that.
We, we can touch base with Menlo Park. We need to have a conversation with them about speed limit. Actually, one of the items that we're going to ask is feedback on Valparaiso. So, we are, we've been working with Menlo Park on the improvements for Valparaiso. They've already designated Valparaiso as a safety corridor, and they would like to move forward with that extra five mile an hour reduction. And so, as we go, as we get feedback from you on things to go back to the bicycle, the Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee, so that we can come back with a formal recommendation and a request for adjustment on a variety of streets, that Valparaiso be one of those considered.
Well, you know, I just, following up on council member Widmer's comment about Laurel and the number of kids going to school on bicycles. I mean, sitting and listening to the people that live on Ringwood and Ravenswood, you know, that it's, it's like that everywhere on certain times of the day. And so, I mean, this, I, I believe like this is kind of the first step, and we really need to pay attention to our roads and update this plan, you know, in a timely manner over, over time as things get worse, you know, and we just, we become aware of it. So, that's, yeah.
I have a question whenever you guys.
Sorry, Stacy, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One of my concerns is that it's only five years' worth of data. Since we have such a low number, like a couple accidents somewhere could change our roads pretty consistently. And I, I haven't been here long enough to know if this matches historic patterns. Is there, because I know people have gotten in major bike accidents on Atherton Avenue, but it was like seven, eight years ago, so that is not reflected in this data. But I'm wondering if that happened three years ago, would Atherton Avenue be on here instead of Oak Grove? Does that make sense? Like, does this track with you guys on, like, people who know better? Does this relate to how you feel like historically it always? Does this relate to how you feel like historically it always is? I mean, some of it's obvious.
Well, go ahead. I have a comment. Go ahead.
I.
Have a rebuttal about that.
Hi.
That logic. Because if it was so long ago and it's not happening in the last five years, then it means that we're not really experiencing that level of, you know, danger or whatever. And so, you know, what happened, you know?
Yeah, it's just like, it's such a small number, if that makes, like, yeah, we don't have, it's 120 accidents total. So Oak Grove maybe got on the list because it had three accidents, but someone had, you know, I agree with you, if it hasn't happened in the last five years, it's good. But I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, are there, do we have any outliers here that are making things rise to the top of the list when we have such a small data set?
Yeah, could possibly be.
Well, I think we all gave George comments and he's got a list that, you know, he said that we should be looking into from the different council members, Atherton Ave, Encinal, Glenwood, Laurel, Pohemus, Stockbridge, Tuscaloosa, and then of course, all of Middlefield Road. So I think those are on our list to check into, but we should also be checking the, you know, the speed data that the chief collects periodically and comes back to the council when we're verifying or adjusting speed limits, as well as looking at where speeding tickets are, given the majority of the speeding tickets, other than just ECR, and what speeds they're being clocked at. I think all that stuff is important information. I don't think that, you know, CCAG went through some of it perhaps, but they didn't call it out that they did. And, and again, I don't feel that there was enough public input. That's my two cents because of the fact that it was just these little pop-up things that were on the side of, of a wall in a library and somebody sitting there, just like in the picture where they're in our Atherton library. And I think you'd, and when it looks at where did all the input came from, Atherton Zero.
Well, there were a couple of comments from Atherton.
They didn't want to give their name. I got it, but.
So I was going to say, we can certainly look at, as we look at future, I was going to say, future reporting on the local roadway safety plan and reports out on where accidents occur. And, and as we do those annual reviews, we can certainly look at whether, and as we do engineering traffic surveys, whether or not we should add additional streets as safety corridors.
To ask a question, we're about to have massive change on Ravenswood at SRI. They're going to add 800 units. We've just rezoned a neighborhood. All these are, if these all come to, to reality, we're going to have massive changes in the patterns. How often do they do this level of studies? At every five years or do you do it every year?
So the, the recommendation is, is that this is a living document and it should have a complete refresh about every five years, but there should be periodic check-ins in between. And so what we're talking about is working with the Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee and maybe looking at either probably a mid-year review on where we are accident-wise. And as the mayor suggests, oh, sorry, as the council member suggested, where we have a propensity of speeding issues. And as we update engineering traffic surveys, making sure that we're taking a look at whether or not there's anything that needs to be brought forward to the council for consideration.
Does CCAG or any of the groups do any predictive modeling of the traffic patterns?
They do it more associated with large-scale development than they do for just general updates. They do do regular congestion modeling, but that's about it.
Okay.
So I was just going to highlight just one last thing in terms of that referral to the bicycle, Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. And that is looking at school zones and the potential reduction to 15 miles an hour, if that is something that the council wants them to, to look at. I provided a rough list of streets with school frontages that we would consider. And so what the law allows is basically within five, I think it's within 500 feet of the school property, that you can reduce the speed limit when children are present down to 15 miles an hour. Right now, we have our school zones designated as 25 miles an hour, which is generally the speed limit anyway for most of the streets.
So you don't have Park near Sacred Heart, Emily or Park?
If you'd like to add that to the list, we can as well. And so you have Park, you have.
And you don't have Alameda.
Well, that's a question.
Alejandra, I say, Alejandra, where Menlo College is and Menlo School is.
Okay. So you'd like those added to the list for referral?
I'm just saying, cars zoom by there, zoom down Alejandra from El Camino, like bad out of hell, you know?
Okay.
Okay. But that's not what we're talking about now.
So if there are no more, I'm, I'm available to answer questions.
I have a question.
You've asked, you've answered a lot of questions.
We, many communities do have speed limits of 15 miles an hour when students are present.
Yeah.
And do you know why Atherton doesn't have that?
Because we haven't taken the step yet. And that's what we're start, that's the conversation that we're starting tonight.
That's what we should do. Are we bringing it back? Any public comment?
Is there any public comment?
Well, I'd like to recommend that the council adopt, make a motion to adopt the resolution adopting the countywide and town of Atherton local roadway safety plan and accompanying Vision Zero goal as discussed, designating certain streets in Atherton as safety corridors.
I'll second it.
Do a roll call, go please.
And is that included, looking at the school zones at 15 miles an hour?
School zones and other areas that we identified.
As what we just discussed. Is that okay?
Yeah, that, that part is more direction than part of the adoption.
Yeah, let's just do it that way. And then we could, you know, give them direction. Good, good point.
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGolia?
Yes.
Widmer?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Hawkins?
Yes.
Okay. And so I'd further like to give direction to staff to look at the reduction in school, students, while students are present. And that's going to be 24/7 along Alejandra because those students live there.
Okay. Yep. The last item on the agenda was.
Are we closing this out then? Good.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Robert. It was very good.
Did you guys get everything? I didn't need to rush you. Sorry.
Just.
Madam Mayor, the last item, item number seven was pulled from tonight's agenda, unless the council in specifically wants to talk about it. It is on the agenda.
I think we have members of the public who want to speak.
It's pleasure of the council.
Yes. Well, do we have anyone? Well, I want to, if, is there anyone here who wanted to give public comment on the train station? Or is there anyone online, Anthony, who wants to give public comment? Anyone want to give public comment? No? All right. Well, then I'll move to a jury.